You never know. Hey, kid. It's May, honey. Don't talk to me. Thirty-six years in the classroom with teenagers. May is an ugly month. Well, I think that would hit. That was... You get this late, May is crowd control. That is all of it. I know. I don't know why I'd get that one. They ought to give it to a more disciplined person. You mean to say you just do? Not today, but... That'd be great. I kind of think... Justin's... It is live. Yeah, we all want to see that on YouTube. This is the way it's been the last two times. It's ridiculous. But the twenty-third, twenty-third is your sound system. Well, better than what used to be. You're not so contagious, are you, kid? That stuff is nasty. It's everybody settles into pieces alone. So even if you like... All that running and walking and... Sure, of course. Yeah. Yeah. I guess the next one, after you've had this.
I call to order the May fifteenth, two thousand nineteen business meeting of Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to please silence your cell phones and electronic devices. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Ms. Bates?
Present.
Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Ms. Bowers? Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Messer?
Present.
Mr. Morowski?
Here.
President Jones?
Here. Thank you. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting, May sixth, two thousand nineteen, the regular board meeting, May sixth, two thousand nineteen, and the special public meeting, May eighth, two thousand eighteen, nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Minutes are approved as presented. Ms. Mitchell, please present tonight's first presentation.
Yes, so I have two brief presentations. I believe that both of these items are... They came to us as assignments from the board. The board wanted an update. And so the first presentation is about advanced placement and is an update. And our college manager, along with our advanced placement blended learning teacher, Craig Hoover, will be providing a presentation. Kayla Riddle-Rickles is our college manager. Thank you.
Thanks. Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, my name is Craig Hoover. I'm the AP Access Program Leader for the district. In that role, I serve all the high schools, title or otherwise, in helping them implement and support AP programs across the district. Also, the AP Access Team Leader, formerly known as AP Blended. And Kayla's going to talk about why we've rebranded that and what that looks like now. And within that program, I'm a teacher as well. And that's where my passion lies, obviously, but all the work we do. Let me go on record here, in front of open board policy and minutes, and say what a joy it is to work with Kayla, the work, the effort, and the partnership that we've done in this. It's very important. So I want to begin with our why. If we have that slide? Oh, there we go. Thank you. Thank you. Our why. So first, foremost, and always, it's about students. First, foremost, and always. And what I always like to talk about is a teacher in our program at Riverview who has some of our AP students in his class, and he said to me, and this goes back a couple of years. He said, Hoover, I can always tell the students that we have in the AP programs. And I said, why is that? He said, they argue smarter. And if anybody knows teenagers, you're going to get that. And the fact that they argue smarter, that just really stuck with me. When I dropped this picture in here, I had a student that just came to mind. It's one of the young ladies in this class. She came to Woodward High School, Cincinnati Public Schools, from Mauritania. She came at Labor Day, so after school it started. There was a concern about her getting into an AP class late on. And my fears were completely unfounded. This is a young lady who could not work any harder, works harder than most any other student I've ever seen, or adult for that matter. Just really works her tail off. Her mother, and just as a matter of the circumstances, where they found themselves an apartment here in Cincinnati, initially, that was going to be where they would live, and then they were going to look elsewhere. And then, once she realized that the opportunities that she had for these AP programs, the other things that we offer here in CPS, this became, you know, a retention, a recruitment issue for her. It became a reason for her to stay in this district. It became a reason for her to be a part of CPS. And you know, when I think about Mauritania to Cincinnati for a matter of education, I can't think of the destination Cincinnati any better than that. And then finally, the quote that you have before you. This is AP, will be better prepared for college and for what we able... For to be able to get what we want. This was just last week from one of our students, and this was after a couple of days where I noticed just the absolute concern, the stress over testing, over state testing, over end-of-year projects, over me preparing her for her AP test. And I'd offered some words of encouragement, but it was the resiliency. It was that that she came to this light, this aha moment that she had when she showed this resiliency. And while I would love to take away the need for some of that resiliency with all the pressure that so many of our students feel, it was just absolutely wonderful to bear witness to that resolve, that aha moment that she had when this light went on. And knowing that that light, that when it went on, was just a piece of something that was going to light the path for her for the next day, for her to get through that, for her to get to college, for her to get to a career, for her to get to the life that she wanted. It makes us feel like we're, you know, hey, maybe we're doing something right. And that felt really good. So celebrations. Going back, and many of you know this, a little bit of history. In two thousand thirteen, fifty percent of our schools had no AP classes. Thirty-six percent of our schools had just one offering. This year, proud to say, and in the last couple of years passed, that all of our schools have at least one AP offering. Many have multiple offerings, and we're getting better, stronger, more logical, smarter about doing that. And it's not just through the AP Blended program. I also, you know, need to give due to places like Schroder, places like Dater, places that have in-house, robust programs that are... Schroder's adding AP Bio next year and working with them, doing again, doing these things smarter, more logical, getting better at what they do. So our impact. Again, in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, one course was taught across seven schools. I like to think of it, it was this startup, we're working in a garage, you know, working hard, doing these things, making things happen, and it's wonderful to look back on that and how romantic and wonderful that was. And I think, wow, what we've learned since then. And we've got a ton to learn, and we learn every day. But here we are now, seven courses taught across eleven schools, serving roughly three hundred students, just in the, again, just in what was known as AP Blended, now AP Access. I think I can also mention right now, it's to that point that we can also add, we are in agreement in principle with the Cincinnati Women's Club, with Ellen Zemke and Sue Show, who mentioned you, Superintendent Mitchell, that we're going to partner with them to bring some resources to bear from them, partner with us to work with young female students to work forward towards STEM development. Eighth grade, young girls who show an interest in STEM. Okay? I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Riddle-Rickles now.
Thank you. So as you can tell, this is an exciting time for advanced placement. As we have built the program within Cincinnati Public Schools, it was critical for us to look inward and figure out what we needed to do to create an advanced placement program. And so there are two key changes and updates to provide you. One is that for this academic year, we've convened an AP Steering Committee, and I'll talk a little bit about that and the deliverables we've been able to generate together. But then also, we're in the midst of preparing for giant changes from the College Board for the Advanced Placement Program. This will provide additional supports for teachers. It will include registration for testing sooner. So every student taking an AP test in May has to register by October before the test. And so making sure we're tight with our program, we are set and ready to go in August is incredibly important. But also, we want to make sure we're supporting students with that access and success component. So the AP Steering Committee was convened, supporting and bringing in stakeholders, including AP Blended teachers, traditional advanced placement teachers, principals, counselors, and administrators at central office to really think about what we need to do to create an advanced placement program across the district. So we can no longer have a segmented and fragmented approach to advanced placement. We really need to think about what the unified approach is, because we are one district, supporting sixteen high schools. And so the three things that we talked about in the recommendations that we've been able to develop surround increasing the student readiness and access to coursework. So not only do we want students to have increased access to the number of courses, we also want them to be more prepared to take on that coursework so that they know what rigors are going to look like when they take the classes. We also want to ensure that the right students are enrolled. So making sure we're tapping all of the students that are prepared for advanced placement, that they're in those courses and know that they can succeed. And then the instructional supports for teachers is incredibly important. How might we ensure that our teachers are ready to teach advanced placement, they have all of the training, the supports, and the instructional needs so that they can deliver high-quality content to our students and have both access and success? So this committee really then convened and said, we're no longer just talking about AP in the schools and advanced placement, but we need to rebrand and be a program. And so now it's AP Access, and we'll be launching that branding in the fall. So this is really looking at creating the accessible advanced placement program across all sixteen high schools throughout the district so that we have both supported teachers and prepared students, so that way we can increase both access and success. So within that, we've developed some next steps. At the board, you'll be able to see some of those recommendations in the board strategic plan for your review and consideration, but really does align to increasing the teacher supports, the teacher professional development, and having aligned student supports for both access and success. In alignment with the advanced placement program changes coming down from College Board nationally, we are also looking at the AP operations to make sure we have intentional support for our schools so we remain completely compliant in that all the students are within the courses they need, have the access to the online portals they need, and are registered for the tests that they'll take each May. So that was our very quick update, because we believe that you'll probably have some questions for us, so we're happy to take those.
Thank you. Do board members have questions? Ms. Bowers?
Hi, thank you. I'm sorry that I was late, but I do have a question about the cost. There is a cost, I think, associated with AP assessment. And I know some schools request that, but then there are other schools in CPS that don't request a cost.
So over the years, again, we've gotten better at this and creating equity and access. The cost this year, as an example, as you mentioned, was ninety-six dollars per test. That's very expensive. We have built into a budget, in Justin Leach's budget, in testing, that there's a process by which our title schools, that cost is covered for those title students. That hurdle to clear that is amazing. As you can imagine, a hundred dollars to take this test is excellent. That's the work that we do across the district, you know, with other departments.
Yes. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Bolton?
Thank you for your presentation. I appreciate it, and this is very important. And for some of the newer members of the board, because I think there's only two of us that kind of remember how long it took us to get AP at the other schools. And it was one of the more important equity accomplishments, I think. So appreciate at least its maturity now. Couple questions, several questions, real quick, and I know we're going to meet also in student achievement, maybe have a little bit more time to talk about some of the more in-depth stuff. But when you mentioned the eleven schools, that does not include certain schools, correct? For that three hundred? Or whatever?
Correct.
So the schools that aren't included in that three hundred would be Walnut and...
That are not.
Yeah.
Right. Walnut, Clark. Dater has a full in-house complement of AP. Schroder has a full... So one of the things we'll do, and we can get to this more in depth tomorrow, is student achievement committee, but we want to build in-house capacity and then supplement with AP Access to create that environment. We don't want to leave any gaps whatsoever. We want to develop that across...
I just didn't want to give the public the thought that there were only three hundred students taking AP.
Exactly. That was just the traveling group. Right.
That's the result of the earlier, the equity program. Also, on the earlier signup, we have to kind of build that in, right? Because I know in our magazine that we get from, as board members, they talked about some of these changes are unwelcome, making kids sign up and districts pay. Earlier, they think it's going to have a negative impact, perhaps, on the signup, particularly of underserved students particularly, because they might still be in that first period of where, oh, this is hard, I'm not doing this anymore, which is a problem.
Sure.
In the very first quarter of AP, people kind of say no to it. And it's sometimes we don't encourage them enough to stay in, no matter what. And that's from principal on down. Okay, so you guys are addressing that. I appreciate it. How many teachers are we sending to the AP professional development conferences?
So what we've adopted through AP Steering Committee, and this just comes from knowledge and getting better, is you go to one before you teach a class, and then once every three years.
Okay.
And what we've done in the budget is, in the upcoming budget, we want to supplement money we have with the AP Lottery Fund.
So are all of our teachers that are teaching AP classes going to be going to the conferences? The national conferences for AP?
For the... So there's the National Conference, and then there's the AP Summer Institute. The Summer Institute is that training institute that is so incredibly valuable. So yes, our policy going forward is to ensure that once before they teach the class, and then once every three years.
I think that's very important.
I can tell you, as an experienced teacher, even every three years that I go, I'm amazed at what I learn.
I'm with you. After a bunch of years, I agree. The other thing, I wanted to just make sure, how are we using distance learning to supplement the blended learning piece? Meaning sharing the teachers and staff and subjects?
Without getting into the nitty-gritty, every single way possible.
Okay, good.
Because no single building is unique, or excuse me, they're all unique, you know, nothing's the same. So I look at each building and say, what can I make work here? How can I best serve students here? What resources are available, people and otherwise?
Great. I'll save some of my more specific questions for tomorrow, but this is a great overview. I will say that one of the big learning curves I had as a new board member was going to Schroder High School, was be now eleven years ago, to see their senior projects. And there were several students that were just, all the students were outstanding, of course, and wonderful, and Schroder strong, but some of the very, very most prepared students, I said, where are you going? And they were saying where they were going to college. And it was fascinating to me, because where they were going to college did not seem to match the skills that I had seen. And I asked the counselor, and I also asked their teacher, and they said, we don't have any AP courses. And that's disqualifying them from having the kinds of competitive edge that they need. And that would have been back in 'oh nine, and it took until two thousand thirteen, if you recall, Mrs. Bates, to get us to where at least we began to start. And it probably had something to do with the equity connection more than anything. So I appreciate the hard work, and whatever I'm sure we can do, we want to do to make sure our kids have better access.
Thank you. Ms. Bates, and then Mr. Messer.
Well, I'll tell you the backstory, and Craig knows this, for the newer board members. Back when my son Griffin was in high school, he was at Walnut, and he got a B in pre-cal. So he applied for AP Calculus, and he was told he would not be successful, and he's not accepted. He has a master's in engineering now, from Ohio State. So, wrong. So with the, not vengeful, but I wanted to do something about this.
You didn't say vengeful, Mel. Go ahead.
If it's happening to him, it's happening. And Eileen Cooper Reed and I put together a resolution that stated, all students must, shall have the opportunity for AP. And we passed it unanimously, and the administration at that time said, it can't be done. Sorry, but we'll try, but it's not going to work, pretty much is what we were told. The teacher said, you're going to bring down the average AP scores for the district with all these other kids. And guess what? The kids that weren't in the AP schools, that were exposed to AP and taking the classes, right, Craig? They're getting their threes, fours, and fives. So actually, it's going up. So it was, it was a board fight in student achievement committee and with the board, and the board prevailed. And my end to the story is that I call that the Griffin-Bates Resolution.
If I might add, just to that point, very, very quickly, the college boards, the APs, for their fiftieth anniversary, some years ago, maybe ten years ago now, actually made it very much in the competition that they expect that there is no exclusivity to taking AP. And actually, they will ding districts. And our parents and our students could ding us for not allowing people to participate. Now, the question is, are we getting the children ready for AP in grades four, five, and six, and seven, and eight? That's the question, because maybe we're not doing that. But to their credit, AP insists there'd be no exclusivity.
Thank you. Mr. Messer?
I have to say, I always loved the history lesson, because things just didn't happen overnight. So it's nice to get that background, and thank you for the presentation. And a few years until we worry about that in our household, but obviously will be something we consider. So I'm curious, with all this progress up to today, which is really exciting, what's next, when you have kind of planned for the go-forward?
So just quickly, there's three things just off the top of my head. The first one, AP Psychology in Every Building. AP Psychology is a high-interest, high-success-rate course. Students love it because they say, wow, why am I doing what I'm doing? I'm crazy. You're crazy. We're all crazy, right? And what I say is, raise your hand if you went to college. Now, keep your hand up if you sat in an auditorium with three hundred people taking an Intro to Psych class. Everybody's got their hand up. Why? We should have AP Psychology in every building for every student who is sniffing college. Absolutely. The second item is, to Eve's point, Ms. Bolton's point, the preparation for students. We want to get these students as early and often and expose them to the kind of academic rigor. It's, and we're working on the branding of that and what to call it. We want to make sure that it's accessible. That's the second piece. And then the third one is one that is being done in other parts of the country, Southern California, New Mexico, Nevada, Arizona. AP Spanish for our ELL students. And they don't officially sit for the class, but they take the test, and they blow it out of the water because it's their native language. And we've got all these incredibly strong, hard-working, Spanish immigrants coming, Hispanic immigrants coming to our district, and they're sitting in classes that they could also be receiving AP credit for.
I also, in closing, want to thank you for a great, wonderful, great presentation. It's always good to hear, you know, these results, and the history lesson is very helpful to put it in context. I think where I kind of paid closer attention to this is when we had our vows and sows ceremony. And a board member, Bolton, mentioned the term competitive edge, or somebody did, you know. And I'm hearing the recognition and acknowledgement that these young people get for their work. And of course, they talk about their, you know, they announce their GPAs and all of this. And it just astounds me, and it is because they're taking heavy loads of AP courses. And the one thing that I noticed, that trend, is that I'm seeing greater diversity in that, those scores. And so that's always good, and I do think that that's a direct result of all the hard work and laying the foundation and the equity work. So again, I look forward to this trend continuing and...
I need to say also, if you remember from that vows and sows recognition, the number of AP teachers that they mentioned. And that's the effort that these AP teachers are doing across the district to support these students.
Absolutely.
They come to us brilliant. What we need to do is support them, and then they come back.
Gotcha. Thank you so much for your presentation. We look forward to seeing you again soon. Thank you. Superintendent?
So if I could just acknowledge the My Tomorrow team. When we started the My Tomorrow initiative at the board's direction regarding equity is when we actually started the implementation of advanced placement courses that were blended, when we noticed that there were schools across the district who didn't have any. So just a shout out and acknowledgement to the My Tomorrow team for recognizing the board's resolution around equity. All right, on to our next presentation. A couple of months ago, I believe, we had a presentation regarding athletics, and the board gave an assignment to the administration to also be able to highlight the work that's being done as it relates to the arts. And so I'd like to introduce Dr. Izzy Rutnick, who is very passionate about the arts, and you'll see that in his presentation.
Thank you. Good morning, board members.
Good morning.
It is a great pleasure to be here, and it is a great pleasure to tell you about the amazing artistic accomplishments in Cincinnati Public Schools. We have our three Es too in the arts. Our three Es are student engagement in the arts, student equity in the arts, and student excellence in the arts. And everything we've done this year has addressed those three Es. Over the last two and a half years, with your support, with your financial support, we now have visual art supplies for students in every single elementary classroom. And that was not always the case in CPS. We have instruments. We have guitars. We have strings. We have orf instruments, xylophones, metallophones, glockenspiels, in every elementary music classroom. And the students are performing on those every day, in every classroom. We've been able to expand our band and string programs at Dater High School, at Leap Academy, at Pleasant Hill Academy, at Schroder High School. Do you know that Schroder High School has a full band and strings program now? Is that not amazing? We were able, with the help of our fine arts instructional coach, Ms. Suzanne Knoll. Please stand, Ms. Knoll, and be recognized. stand, Ms. Nall, and be recognized. It was her idea to create a CPS Arts magazine called Spark. You have a copy of it in front of you. This documents in details the artistic outreach in every school. And making sure that equity is behind everything that we do. And we are so proud of this arts magazine because it finally is doing justice in documenting and showing you visually what is going on in our artistic classrooms. This year, we got very serious about expanding gifted services in the arts. Some of you noticed that we went with a new arts, gifted arts provider. We had gone with Katz many, many years. And we decided to go with Alive &amp; Arts this year. They were able to offer the same and even more services at less of a cost to us. And they made a commitment to actually going to our classrooms and working with our teachers to get 65% increase in assessed and identified gifted students this year. That's an accomplishment.
Right.
Students from 30 schools, we got assessed. And on May 20th, on Monday, if you can pop by the Mayerson side of this building, you will see our music portion of Gifted Arts Day. We are bringing in these music artists from around the city, the best and the brightest, to come in and work and inspire and motivate and engage our gifted music students. This is the first time this has ever happened in CPS history where we've had a Gifted Arts Day for students in the arts and brought in the best and brightest artists from around the city, artists who look like our kids. And who came from similar backgrounds of our kids. And show them that, I did it, you can too. The dance part of the day, because remember, we're doing gifted arts in dance, music and visual art. The dance part of the day will be at Xavier University, O'Connor Sports Center Dance Studios. We got that whole complex and that facility for the whole day for 200 bucks. Because Xavier is a partner and they like what we're doing. They are going to work with guest dance artists and going to have a phenomenal day at Xavier. Visual art students will be bused down to the Taft Museum of Art. And they will work with professional visual artists throughout the entire day down at the Taft Museum of Art. It's important, it's so important that our kids get out of the classroom and get to the professional artistic organizations and see those organizations so they will, in the future, with their families, support those organizations and make sure that they know that they're welcome there. Everything is about our students. And we can't have an arts presentation without you hearing from the most important people in CPS, which is our students. So this first student, it is my great pleasure to invite up from Aiken High School. She's been identified as gifted in the visual arts, Amy Ferry. Come on up, Amy.
Hello, good morning. I'm just going to apologize ahead of time. I have nerve damage in my eyes. I'm legally blind. So I'm, I'm sorry. I'm reading this off of the paper, so I might kind of mess up a little bit.
It's okay.
All right. So I say, hi, my name is Amy Ferry. I am 11th grader at Aiken High School. I was asked to speak to you today about Cincinnati Public Schools Gifted Art Identification Program. My art teacher at Aiken High School thought I would be a good student to go through the gifted identification process. This opportunity has opened my eyes to what I'm, to what it means to be prepared. To prepare for this process, I had to write about my work. I had never before sat down and done this. I realized that my artwork reflects my struggle, past history and my feelings. Each piece tells a different story and writing about them has allowed me to share my story with others. I also had to create and select which pieces would go into my portfolio. Getting my art and my writing together took a long time. But I now have an art portfolio that not only identifies me as a gifted visual art student, I now have a portfolio, portfolio that I can submit to art, to art schools. If I choose that pathway, I graduate, if I choose that pathway after I graduate from Aiken. When I was growing up, I did not have access to regular art classes. No one was looking for visual art opportunities for me. I was very grateful to, to my art teacher, Ms. New, for supporting me and my creative journey. I have my, I have hope, I hope my story can be example for important arts education. And I hope Cincinnati Public School students can continue to have access to strong art programs and continue to be supported through their creative works. Because this support can be life-changing. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's just a slight sample of Amy Ferry's artwork. She didn't have opportunities in art until she came to CPS in high school, and we provided those opportunities for her. One of the things we're most proud of, and I have to acknowledge Board Member Bowers because she was seated right in front of me. We've worked for the past two and a half years to bring back something incredibly important, which is Withrow Sounds. I am thrilled to stand here before the board today and tell you that every student at Withrow High School now has the same opportunities in musical theater, in backstage theater, in technical theater that the kids at Walnut do and the kids at SCPA. Because we now have the return of Withrow Sounds again. And their most recent performance was on the 9th, 10th and 11th. Alumni back from 30, 40 years ago came back. They worked, worked with the kids. They donated money to the program. We have a totally updated and renovated auditorium with a dynamite sound system, and it is fantastic. We now have after-school choreography classes at Withrow. We have an after-school stage craft class. And one of the wonderful things about this new program is we get to experience new students who are extremely talented that we really weren't aware of because Withrow didn't have this program until this year. And I'd like you to hear from one of the main student performers this year in Withrow Sounds Again. She's going to Northern Kentucky University on a theater scholarship. Please help me welcome Antoinette Fanta.
Hello.
Hello.
My name's Antoinette Fanta. I'm 17 years old and a senior at Withrow and soon to be alumni. And let me just say, it was amazing working with the sounds of Withrow. Mr. Rick, Zachary Riggins, our director, bombarded me with history about the sounds of Withrow and saying that they haven't brought it back for like 35 years now. I'm like, oof. And like theater is one of the main things at Withrow we don't have. Like, we have other clubs and other things, but theater was never one of them. And someone like me who was passionate about theater never had the opportunity. I got skills from other things, like I got my acting skills from doing skits at church or my vocal skills from working at MRC, a studio where I learned to sing and stuff. And we had a good beginning, rough middle and rough ending. But altogether, it was just amazing. It was hard to get a lot of students in. And when we got to the point where we all were struggling, I got told by a bunch of the students that they wouldn't be here if it wasn't for me. Like, they stayed because of how I made it seem so interesting and so amazing with it. And I'm like, oh my gosh, I feel so touched and loved. And it was just amazing from our stage manager who did a lot, even more than what her job required. Our choreographer, Melody, who taught me all these dances and I remembered them, thank gosh, I did. Because it was amazing, because it was a lot. We had did scenes from, we had, we had a gospel segment, The Preacher's Wife, a lot of stuff. We did stuff from the history. We did 70's Shaft Dance Number, Aquarius. We also did Hamilton, where the students got involved in. Now, my part, I did everything. I sung, I danced, I acted, I did the stage craft, I did more than I needed to. But it was a good learning experience for me because I'm pretty sure I'm going to have to learn that up at NKU. Might as well get a head start on it now. And it was just amazing. And when we, those three days I was there, it was just phenomenal. I got, I was excited throughout the whole thing. And Friday was the best one because that's where I met Dr. Ruggnay, who ran up to me. And I was like, oh, this is to come speak. And I was like, yeah, sure, I love talking about my experience because theater is something we need to give back. Not just that, but like bring the creativity back at Withrow. And I really think there are some diamonds in the rough that need to be shown, but they need the opportunity for it. And even though I'm leaving this year, hopefully, that performance can start something up. I'm the type of person, like, I don't have to be there for it, but if I can pass it on to generations to come, then that'll be enough for me. Because I know I left a seed in there for it to grow throughout Withrow. And I'm proud to say that this opportunity was amazing for me. And I'm here to say that theater is something that shone. And like theater throughout the years brings a lot out of people's character. I saw people up there who were introverts, who got out of their shells singing and dancing and just having a good time. And the student cast was amazing. If I, if I wasn't just taking the charge of the leader, I don't know what it was. But it was just being with them and being with everyone was just truly amazing. I learned these new people. I learned all these things. And we were a whole family as one. And Mr. Riggins was the person who made it happen. And he told me I was one of the students that made it happen. Because I got all the students together. I grabbed people. I taught, I had, had to beg some of them to stay because, you know, we got to the point where we really needed them. And in the end, it came out great. It was wonderful. One of my mentor who showed up, she said she had to apologize to me because she thought it was just going to be like this little school play, you know, is everyone up there acting all cute? No, this was a big thing, honey, let me tell you that. This was something, this was a big production. And it was just amazing and phenomenal how it was. And I'm just glad I had got this opportunity and I would be glad to take those skills with me as I go to college. Because I really want to major in theater. It's something I love to do. I've got all these talents and theater is the one I can do. I can do it. I can dance, I can sing, I can act, plus I get to dress up in amazing costumes, let me just tell you that. So that's a like bonus for me. But I'm just here to tell you that this experience was amazing for me. And I'm glad to say that I was happy to get this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to show you all just a short clip of one of our wonderful gifted students. She's been identified as gifted in music. And she had the opportunity to work with Jumpstart Theater, which goes into different schools. This year, it was Euler, and they helped them do a complete production. It doesn't cost the school anything. And this is Kiara Powell in Aladdin. Check this out.
(Singing) Everyone who loves the world, who have a problem, they don't want to stay. Let now, we are calling back to the world. And I'm waiting, waiting for my turn. And it's me, never take your word, don't you dare leave. I'm riding, so low, like this old man, and I'm going to break my feet. I'm someone who can't hold you, I'm not ready, never be, I don't want to let you down. This world is short, we play the game, you know, we're coming, we're coming. I'm so, I'm breaking all the promises, I'm giving you my heart.
So it's my pleasure now to allow you to meet this wonderful young artist, Kiara Powell.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. My name is Kiara Powell and I'm be finishing my freshman year at Euler School. I've always loved performing since I was little, but I never took it seriously until a very important person in my life had died. And since then, it's been amazing for me because, like you said, Jumpstart Theater, I was on the front cover of one of their magazines this year. I am in the magazine Spark. And I'm just so happy because I never thought that I'd be here today. And I'm gifted, gifted, I'm gifted.
Yes, you are, yes.
Performing for me has been a very long experience, but it has been fun. Because when I perform, I am really happy and it gains confidence. But I also gain friendships in these performances. The bonds that you make between these students and these teachers preparing for these performances are amazing. And I would say unbreakable, but you never know what happened. But it's, they are strong, they are really strong. And it's definitely prepared me to be a true leader. And I also want to say, what is earth without art? It's eh, boring, you know what I'm saying? And what you're sitting at, art, furnitures, art, technologies, art, music is art. Basically, everything is art. And I'm happy to say I'm a part of that. Thank you.
So, many of you know, because you've attended our community collage events in the past. In prior years, we were able to do one huge event at the end of the year. This year, we decided to spread it out and have several events throughout the city and bring together several different art forms. And it really, really was amazing. I'll just talk about one or two of those. The Black History Month event that we did to honor black jazz musicians in history, we had it at Clark Montessori, and it was amazing. We brought together high school jazz groups from around CPS. And we had huge posters of the incredible artists, Billie Holiday, Louis Armstrong, Bessie Smith, Charlie Parker. And it was really, really wonderful. So we're going to continue doing these multiple community collage events. And our last event is actually tomorrow at the Contemporary Arts Center, where our students will have the opportunity to go down to the Arts Center. They worked on a group sculpture piece, which is phenomenal. And I believe that our student artwork there will be up for at least a week. Yeah. So if you get a chance to just pop by the CAC, you can see our CPS student art exhibit in a world-class art museum. This is what we are doing in the arts. Of course, we had our citywide art show this year. We had a wonderful award event here. We had a record number of parents and students attend. Increased artistic programming for special needs students. This year, we worked closely with melodic connections. And we work closely with visionaries and voices. And we want to expand this for next year. We have to reach out and provide artistic opportunities specifically for our special needs children. Because in the past, they've been overlooked or they've had the same exact content as all the rest of our students. That content needs to be more individualized. And we are going to be working on that. Really proud to tell you that for the past two years, through your support, we've been able to bring in nationally-recognized teaching artists to do professional development at the beginning of the year with our teachers. People like Dr. Rallo Dilworth from Temple University, who has just energized our whole music faculty. They work with our teachers. They give them new ways of thinking of things. They help them improve their classroom teaching methods. We work with 15 local arts organizations to secure additional classroom resources for our teachers. Our teachers have to be given the opportunity to grow and learn. That benefits our students. So pleased to let you know. for our teachers. Our teachers have to be given the opportunity to grow and learn. That benefits our students. So pleased to let you know, last year, we had one summer program, the Summer Jazz Academy. This year, we have three. We have the Summer Art Studio Intensive at the Contemporary Arts Center. We have the Summer Dance Intensive at Western Hills High School. And we have the CPS Summer Jazz Academy at Walnut. These are open to seventh through 12th grade students and the cost of these summer programs is zero because you've been able to help us. We need to make sure that every kid who wants an opportunity to participate can and will participate. We're removing barriers. Every day, another one, we chop it down. International performing opportunities. I will make sure, because I know we're running short of time, I will make sure that we send you this PowerPoint or give you a link to it so you can see these two student videos. This year, we had an opportunity to take 15 CPS students over to Bulgaria to do a series of concerts. They stayed with host families in Bulgaria. They learned about the language, the culture. They performed with Bulgarian students and it really, really was quite extraordinary. And the parents of the students raised all the money. There wasn't one cent that cost CPS anything, but it's important. Other school districts are giving their kids opportunities. We need to do that too. Just a few of the photos of our students halfway across the world doing amazing things. We live in a global economy. We live in a global world. Our students need to participate and be a part of that world. And then finally, new programming for 2019-20. Working with Superintendent Mitchell and a lot of partners, we will be able to start the first after-school Jazz Academy for fourth through sixth grade students. We have to start training our students younger. We must, so that they are prepared. And this will be free of charge and open to student musicians throughout the district. District initiatives, that's what we are working on. Not one or two special opportunities for one or two schools. District initiatives that everybody can participate in. We will have an after-school visual art studio next year. On October 5th, so excited about this. On October 5th, 2019, we are doing the first ever Cincinnati Public Schools International Jazz Festival. It will be down at the Aaronoff Center for the Arts. Every CPS high school will participate and there will be artists coming in from all over the world. How is this being paid for, you ask? It's being paid for through a foundation that is associated with the Cincinnati Bengals, who called us up and said, it's time that we do a student music festival and we support a student music festival. So that's where the money's coming from. We're not paying for it, but we're going to showcase the amazing talent and the work that we're doing in this great American art form of jazz. New school arts programming, again, this is with your help, your directive. You told me to identify the most underserved after-school needs in the arts. We've identified those. We're working with activities beyond the classroom to put that into place that will start in the fall. The 11 most underserved schools will get after-school arts programming. And with the help of board member, Mr. Davis, we are working on an instrumental music pathway for students at South Avondale, starting out with students there and then we'll expand it, that helps them move on to Withrow and then matriculate into HBCU instrumental music programs at Central State University, Kentucky State, and Alabama State. Our goal is to make sure that they have full scholarships when they graduate from CPS and go on to study music at these colleges. And we are going to make that happen. Thank you so much for your continued support of a very important curricular piece of CPS's offerings, which is music, art, dance, and theater. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, questions and comments? Mr. Davis, followed by Mr. Messer. We'll just go down the line here. Okay, Mr. Davis.
I'll be real quick. Wow.
Are you, oh, okay. That's it. Talk about emphasis, okay. Mr. Messer.
Yes, thank you. And this might have been one of my requests, this presentation, because it's something that is near and dear to me. I grew up in a very poor farming community that had really no music and I had a fourth grade teacher who decided we should start a drama club and we should start a chorus. And she wasn't musical, but what a difference. It created a total community for students and the productions and everything associated. And I credit so much to Sue Hart, my fourth grade teacher, and all the people that volunteered there. And, you know, I think the depth and breadth of what you are leading for CPS is just absolutely amazing. So thank you for that. And, you know, I think what I didn't hear so much, and I'm sure there are some things happening, but, you know, there was a great New York Times article about Baltimore and how the new symphony conductor there came in after, I forget his name, but he was there forever and then she came in. She wanted to make her mark. And so she decided to reach out to the schools and form a partnership. And that program has grown where there's now thousands of kids who are not only in music programs, they have their own instruments and they're, they're being taught by the local symphony orchestra. And it's just such a huge program there with so many benefits. It's been on the nightly news and 60 Minutes and all those. So with the rich history of the arts and with the heavily endowed arts that we have and with the very loyal supporter of arts patrons in this city, you know, my first question is kind of at what level are we engaging with the Patty Beggs of the world, the Raffaela Plato's of the world, who I know firsthand are supporters of CPS, to even take our game even further?
Right, and that's a wonderful question. The CPS CAC Summer Arts Studio Intensive that we're doing, that was created with Raffaela Plato and the superintendent in a meeting three or four months ago. We are working closely with her. We hope to be able to expand that to programs in the schools. We're going to do this summer program for the first time this summer. She is thrilled to be working with Cincinnati Public Schools and we will continue to work with her. We are working with a group that is associated with the Cincinnati Symphony Orchestra. We've started an after-school string quartet program at Woodford Pidea Academy and every Tuesday and Thursday, those kids have the opportunity to perform and rehearse and learn with a professional string quartet. We want to expand that opportunity. Through your support, we've been able to bring on, in the past year and a half, an additional full-time strings teacher. She is teaching strings at some of our, she's teaching strings at Vine Street RSA. We've got this unique academic and strings preschool program. She was the one that brought, helped us bring back the strings program at Withrow, two strings classes every single day at Withrow. We are working on those programs and we will continue to expand those.
Good. And if I could just add, you know, I think, you know, the other thing is I've made my way, I think I'm maybe up to 40 schools, 41 maybe, that I've been to. I always try to figure out where the music is and it just so happened, my Aiken visit, the band was in full throttle mode and it was absolutely amazing and to be able to see that firsthand. But I understand that we, you know, there are cost challenges that to be able to allow a student to have their instrument to be able to take home is pretty expensive. And I know that can be a cost constraint. You know, what I would say is, you know, I think whether it's uniforms, you know, when our students go to be in a parade, I want them to look like any other school. I want them to have the same opportunity to take their instruments home. And I do believe we have a community that if we said, here is our dream, we need uniforms at these schools, we have this many students that don't have their own instrument, I could pretty much guarantee that we would have patrons in the city who would make that happen. And so, you know, we've talked about having a development person to kind of help CPS as a whole. And I think this would be an incredible place that we could start because there's very few, Ms. Bates and I were at the SCPA dinner and a woman approached me and said, you know, I'd like to contribute. How could I contribute to the arts at CPS? And that SCPA dinner was, I think, a good sign of how rich and deep the supportive arts are in our city, specifically for our students. And, you know, I think there's a way to take that to the next level. But thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you.
Ms. Bowers.
Hi, Dr. Rutney.
Hello.
First, you and I met at SCPA when you were artistic director. I hated to see you leave, but now I'm so glad that you're in the position to expand. This is extraordinary. I am a pendulum. I love the arts as much as I love sports because I, you know, my daughter went to SCPA and I am so happy, Ozzy, about the pipeline pathway to HBCU. As a HBCU graduate of two schools, and my daughter's at Alabama State, so I can't wait to see the connection between CPS and Alabama State. Congratulations, this is great.
Thank you. Mr. Morosky.
I'll just add on to that. I remember those conversations in SAC and it's amazing how, honestly, it seems really quickly that it was actualized, the pathway to the HBCUs. So kudos on that. As a musician, you know how much I love all of this and how impressed I am by it. The one thing I just want to call out, since Pam took half of my kudos, I really, really am excited about the continued partnership with Betsy and Melodic Connections for the students with disabilities. I used writing, or I taught writing for 10 years and I used jazz to teach writing to students with learning disabilities during that time. And I used to do at-home tutoring for the state of Ohio many, many years ago and always used music with kids that had severe autism. And the more we can even do with that and whatever that looks like, and I know what it looks like, it looks like us allocating dollars for it, but I just would want you to know that that's something I'm interested in expanding on. At Gamble's graduation last year, their chorus got up and performed and their chorus covers virtually every base of every kind of student and learner. And I've, this might sound melodramatic, but I've not seen anything really more beautiful from a young person's choir than watching Gamble's choir perform. So the more of that we can do as well, I think is great because I don't need to tell anybody in this room, especially you, the impact that has on those students' ability to do better in every single class is almost unmatched by any other course or curricular activity. So kudos to you and let's keep it going.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Bolton.
Thank you very much. Referencing Ms. Bowers' position about SCPA, we like to say we let no crisis go unused. And a crisis at one school created this district-wide. It's remarkable. It also is remarkable to have an artist that is a graduate of SCPA as our superintendent. This is very, very important. And not that anybody plays favorites because she'd do the opposite to make sure nobody thought there was any favoritism. But the reality is it makes a difference because people know it. History lesson, Cincinnati Public Schools wrote the first K-12 music curriculum like 100 years ago. And New York City followed. That's how famous we have been for music in this town and that's why there's all these patrons, whether it's the May Festival or the Queen's City of the West or what have you in the cultural aspects. As a person who spent as much time after-school in the arts at Wyoming as I did in the classroom for social studies, at Wyoming, the demand for art was great, but the budget wouldn't allow it. So there was no speech and drama class. There was no theater course. Everything was done after-school. And in a community like that, you can do that. It'd be great and that's why I'm happy about many of the after-school activities that we do because it does serve it. Questions, the district initiatives, how will children get to these district initiative sites transportation-wise and who will pay their registration in the name of equity?
Right. Every single one of the programs that I outlined, the registration cost to the students and to the district is zero.
And then transportation?
Transportation, we are working on removing that barrier and actually, for some of these after-school programs, what we're talking about is at the end of the school day, making that particular location, the Jazz Academy is going to be at the Kennedy Heights Art Center, making that an actual stop after-school. So that's part of the whole district stop. So we're trying to do everything we can to keep the cost extremely low to the district, but to make sure that every child who needs transportation will be able to attend all of the events.
All the more reason why we have to find those savings and efficiencies in transportation to even be able to afford these sorts of things. Then I have kind of, maybe it's a little negative question, but, or it shows a bias, I'm not sure. I know that we fought long and hard to get the equal amount of instructional time at our high schools because we didn't have that. That dates all the way back, way back. And then we got it. And part of the reason was that we wanted elective opportunities. And unfortunately or fortunately, depending upon where we are, we have to kind of balance the elective piece with the need that many students need additional remediation or additional service. So it's, it's an unintended consequence now, I'm sure, that now we may not have the elective opportunities that we had planned because we're doing something else with some of those hours. So I think the individualization instead of wholesale kind of approach to it would be useful. I'm very interested, finally, and because, I mean, as Mr. Morosky mentioned, we talk a lot about all of this at SAC, but I'm very interested in knowing if we had any high schools that requested additional art staffing, because it's not about money only. It's about staffing at high schools and scheduling. If we had any additional high school requests for art staffing, and we don't need to answer now, but, and be it denied because I would assume, knowing a few high schools, that their interest in expanding their arts was just as important as some of the other issues that they have because of what it does. And finally, about the Aiken Band, when Aiken was just starting again in the new building, the first ID of that building and that school, again, rightfully so because the people that wrote that history, that curriculum, were Aikens, just so you know, and that's why they were famous. But, but the reality was, was that little band. And the arts, as much as any classroom piece, actually depends upon the individual teacher. And if you don't have a teacher that is showing the passion beyond contract hours or beyond what is normally minimally expected, you're not going to have an arts program. This is about, as you said in the beginning, it's about passion.
So just a final comment and I, and actually, I'm directing it to the three young ladies who came down. Just to congratulate all three of you. Number one, in what you are achieving and you're, you're a leader at your schools in what you do and that's something you should be very proud of. Maybe you'll think about coming back to the district after you achieve your education and do some other things, but it would be nice to have you back. But in addition to your art, I mean, just your expression of yourselves standing here at this podium, which is not always easy to do, and sort of that naturalness that you all had, I'm very, I'm very impressed. And, you know, you didn't have, you didn't have any props. A couple of you didn't have the props. Some of us have to have props, you know? But, so congratulations to you and thank you for sharing your story here. We appreciate it. Thank you.
President Jones, if I could just add one other really quick thing. As a result of the work that Kayla Rickles is doing with the College and University Consortium, the president... the president of the Cincinnati Art Academy came to me once the school year started and said, "We've heard about what you're doing with this consortium. What can we do?" And we said, "Give us scholarships for our kids." And so I want you all to know that two students received a full ride to Cincinnati Art Academy the first time, and so we're really happy and excited for those other people.
Great. Thank you for sharing that. Okay. So we're going to move on with the agenda with kudos. Anybody have any kudos? Ms. Bowers, followed by Mr. Morosky.
I have two kudos. One, shout out to the Withrow Sound performance that Dr. Rutne has already talked about. It was an excellent performance. I actually felt like I was at SCPA, this is how great this was, like they're on that level, moving toward that level. Is it Anna?
Antoinette.
Antoinette lit up the stage. She is not a diamond in the rough. She is a diamond. And I really liked your Hamilton performance, the best. That was very good. Everybody did good, but that one was very good, that part. Also, I would like to give a shout out to Cove Dell Elementary for their first annual 513. I was very impressed with the dioramas. Like, these kids are very gifted in identifying the community, the history. They went to cemeteries and they like, with, I guess it was carbon paper and tennis balls, actually gave history about the community in replication of what, things in the cemetery, the headstones. I learned about the role of Rama, the financial impact that it, that it's in dire straits. And I heard sixth graders use that financial dire straits term as to why they're closed and the effect that it's going to have on them with fundraising for their school and the other schools around. And I also liked the information about food waste. I actually encouraged and talked to the administrator and the food service about food waste in their school. So it was very good. And I saw President Jones there. Saw pictures of you.
So Ms. Bowers stole another one of my comments. So I will just add once again to Ms. Bowers. 513 Day was a great success, and it was in celebration, of course, to their first-year Vision 2020 and their community leadership focus. And so Ms. Bowers already highlighted, like, the whole thing was about their community. And there were, what was really neat, and I'll address another side of what was so impressive about it, is that the community came out en masse to be a part of it. Business owners, fire folks, police folks, they were all there. And so the, the idea of our neighborhood schools being tethered to the community and part of the community and how that creates success for everybody, I think, was on display. Pretty fully, one final thing, the, the young folks who did that music video, "It's Lit to Not Get Hit," they, of course, won.
National.
National. And the, the three young men are all going to Walnut next year together, and they've already made more videos. They plan to continue it. Their next video focuses on drivers and what you can do to be a safer driver. Of course, their first one was about the kids and how kids can cross streets more safely. And so it was really impressive. I know Ms. Bolton doesn't get tired of me filling up our student achievement agendas with things, so I invited them to maybe come talk there or somewhere here and do one of their performances. It was a really cool day.
Thank you. Other kudos. Ms. Bolton.
I have a kudo, a couple of kudos. First of all, I was able to see the, the Aiken Art Exhibition after I attended the Capstone and Link presentation of our elementary folks. And the elementary link or capstone, I thought, was particularly impressive this year. And I know there's some dialogue about reshaping it so that it may seem more inclusive or what have you. I don't know what the professionals are talking and saying and thinking about, but I will tell you, that kind of thing, I would like it to be more inclusive, but I also like the fact that these particular children are able to shine and feel as though they can be on a particular path because it's competitive and it's, it's very important. And I was just so impressed with the Chase team particularly. I found that absolutely great. And, and it was stronger than it's been before, I think. And I'm not sure, so kudos to the staff that works through that and does all that. And it's mostly, I guess, social studies. The other thing, yesterday I attended the Kiwanis for both, I guess, Chiviet and Westwood. And these are people that really don't, very many of them live in the district, and they're very supportive of what we do. And I was told yesterday by any number of these people that Chiviet School has saved Chiviet. I got goosebumps as a native Westsider and everybody, you know, we talk about the lowering the bridges. Jennifer and Melanie could go and talk to the people of Chiviet. They love that school. They love that principal. They love those kids. Housing is increasing, the, the property values are increasing because they have a village school that has the benefit of a district-wide resource. And it's, and then we've got to get that happening in Silverton particularly, the same sort of feeling. So I, it just, it was great. These are people that are very conservative people, and they have embraced that school and those kids, and they know what it's done to the community. And that's also why we have to keep emphasizing the neighborhood schools.
Yes, absolutely. I just wanted to, I have a question with the, I, I wanted to go to the Link's, Capstone's presentation. Is that a competition?
Well, the professionals can explain it better, but it is, you, you kind of work for the, you work together, maybe.
There are certain awards.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Okay, I, I have a neighbor who is a teacher and her kids are, her one daughter graduated from Walnut and is doing extremely well at Hampton, getting ready to study abroad, who presented in the Capstones when she was in school. But her younger daughter saw me yesterday, just hanging out in the neighborhood, and wanted to come to my house to present her project. So I am going to do that. I'm going to invite her over this weekend so she can show me her project. So I, I've missed it, but I will get to see at least one, yes.
And as you reshape it, please keep whatever's been the great strength about it.
Right. That's great. Thank you. Any other kudos? Okay, Mrs. Bates, please present the retirements.
Yes, we have several retirements today to announce. From our certificated personnel, John W. Dean, one of our teachers. From our civil service personnel, Robert M. Jennings, Shelley A. King, Eric V. Reader. So we congratulate all of our professionals on their retirement and their, their next set of goals and thank them for their service to our children.
Thank you. We are now at the item on our agenda for hearing of the public. Each speaker has three minutes to speak, and Mrs. Wacken will be our timekeeper. When the buzzer goes off, your three minutes are up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. When your name is called, please come to the podium to speak. Our one and only speaker who knows the routine, Ms. Martina Brookfield.
I wore my tall shoes so I wouldn't have a repeat of last time. No, I'm preaching to the choir here. When I talk about the tax abatements, how they hurt our schools, hurt our kids, but apparently there are still some folks out there who just don't get it. So I'm spitballing ideas on how we can make the point hit home, and this morning you get to be my test audience. So no one likes to pay taxes. It's not my favorite thing to do, but as an analogy, say I sustain a serious injury in my home. I am paying for a system to have a fire and EMS department that has the proper equipment and training just in case something like that happens. There's no guarantee that I'll ever have a situation where I fall down the stairs and break both my legs, but just in case, I'm paying taxes to have this service available. In CPS, we're not only about getting kids in classrooms because we know that's not the only part of learning. We offer the necessary supports for students and their families just in case a father who struggles to read needs to be able to help his child with homework. Just in case there are students dealing with hunger whose only guaranteed meals are the ones they get at school. Just in case there are children coming into school after witnessing gun violence in their neighborhoods who need a licensed mental health practitioner to help them through the trauma. These "just in cases," for us, they are real, they are acute, and they need to be addressed properly before we can even talk about having the kids in classrooms learning. There are costs involved, and the rampant proliferation of these tax abatements that we've seen, it affects our ability to have these services for our students. And no kind of specious reasoning or calculations are going to be able to deny that. So just something I want to throw out there as we proceed into negotiating with other entities about tax abatements for the 99 agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we'll move into our next agenda item under Board Matters, which is to continue the discussion around our tax levy scenarios. Last, at our last board meeting, we had a fairly robust discussion about the three options that, that were being presented. And, and I'm not going to give the detail on that. I'm going to ask our finance chair to do that. But our, our goal for today is to really bring some clarity to each one of these options and decide, we really need to make a decision today about our next steps and which option and how we move forward. So that's our goal. We had the three resolutions on, as part of our packet, as a first reading last week, so we're ready to do that once we have finished that discussion. So Board Member Bolton, if you could just kind of capture and summarize where we are.
Thank you, Madam President. Certainly I will. We have before us the need for a renewal levy, the tune of $65 million, I recall. And we have had extensive efforts done by Administration and Finance Committee over a number of months, last year, this year, looking at the options that we have because we are facing a number of levy and renewal options in the coming several years. And so what has been brought before us are three opportunities. One is to continue what we have done in the past with this particular levy, with a renewal levy, is to go for an emergency five-year levy. The other option that was brought to us was the idea that we could extend it for any number of years, and the number that seemed reachable and doable and would also positively impact the rotation of the levies coming forward was to suggest we have an emergency levy, as it is called. It's not an emergency, but that's what the state calls it for benefit of the public. And that would be for a duration of 10 years, and it would be a renewal for 10 years. This particular levy has been renewed three times over the last 15 years, so we have some degree of confidence that the, the community would feel comfortable extending the timeframe. The third one is what some, many other districts are beginning to do and have done over time, which is having a continuing levy that does not necessarily have an end point, but could have an end point be determined. And the discussion we had last time was whether or not you can use the word renewal, whether we felt this was a good climate for a major change or just sort of a change. The other item was whether or not to have it in November or in the spring, and it seemed like the consensus last time that we spoke is that we were narrowing it down to November, that that's, so kind of the May option has gone. We talked briefly about getting it down to two, and I think it was Member Davis that brought us back. Listen, until we really know, and until we had all seven of us here, maybe we leave all three options before us. So that's, the discussion is to decide which of the three options works for us, and then procedurally, how shall we do that? Can we reach sort of consensus publicly and only introduce one resolution if we think that's where people are? Or would this be, are we legally or by discussion required to vote on all three?
Okay. So I'm, I'm also going to ask Mr. Hoynes if he could come to the podium, and while, while he's coming to the podium, I think in your packets, there are two sets of resolutions, one from last week, and then the ones that were recently submitted to us were with revisions and corrections. So the ones that we will presenting, will be presenting tonight are those that came in our packet from Mr. Hoynes on May 6th. Those are the ones with the revisions. So as he approaches the podium, if, if folks have questions or comments to, for clarification, this is the time to ask those questions. How about if you do this? If you could just give us just a brief go over each option, provide some clarity in terms of what, what it is we're voting on in the resolutions.
Yes, thank you. And, and just to reiterate the three options, there's the five-year renewal, a 10-year renewal, and then the third is slightly different. It's not a renewal. It's a substitute levy for a continuing period of time. Again, the one difference in a substitute levy is that the, the first two options are emergency levies, which are for a set amount of money, in this case, $65 million. The third option is for a set amount of money in year one, $65 million, but grows with that same rate applied to new construction in the district. That's, that's the substitute levy. The only other note I'll make is that, you know, I'll just draw your attention to the one change we recommended. Our outside counsel reviewed these resolutions and recommended that in Section 3 of each of the, of each of the three resolutions, we add the phrase, "The school district has territory in Hamilton and no other county." So no substantive change, but one technical change to the resolutions.
As I look at these resolutions, I'm, I'm getting a little bit confused. Because they all say the same thing in the heading. Am I, am I not, maybe board members can help me with that? So, so what was in my attachment was this packet. So I'm just trying to figure out which ones are which. They all say, "Resolution declaring it necessary to levy a tax in excess of the 10 mil limitation." So.
So it's, I don't know if they maintained my note at the top. Option one, five-year renewal.
Okay. Option one, option two, option three.
Yep.
This are the revisions, and all the revisions in red are the same. Okay, gotcha. Okay. Questions or comments? Ms. Bolton?
I have a question, and probably I'll have a comment later as this goes on, but when you said that it's a set amount of money for the first year, but it grows with new construction.
Correct.
Is the new construction specifically our new construction, or is it the entire community's new instruction, construction?
It's the value, it's the same rate that was used to generate the, the funds from the previous year, applied to the value of the new construction in the entire geographic region of the Cincinnati School District. So it's all, all the district new construction.
So from a, from a financial and fiscal position, that's very attractive in part because it's more money, but it also is, we're not going back to the voters necessarily. We're not going back to the voters to have it renewed at a particular time or like we would with these 10-year or 5-year.
That's correct.
Is that correct? So that's, at least from a financial standpoint, that looks good.
Yes.
And that's why our treasurer is very much interested in that and should be. And all of us on finance have always been interested in it too, because it does grow and we need that. Because unlike the city, we don't have an income tax that grows necessarily, or some school districts like Wyoming has an income tax that grows. We are living and dying on the property tax. We are living and dying on the property tax. Here's my problem with the whole construction piece. I have great reservations about the continuing one, the substitute one, because I think the construction piece makes us live through the whole tax abatement issue again and again, either directly or indirectly, or in the minds of the voters, because you're talking about expansion and construction. I think that's confusing. I think it's confusing, too, to tell people that they may or may not have a soon opportunity or a set opportunity to say no to us, or to agree to have it be extended. I think those are really very difficult things to communicate to the voters at a time that, and I think I mentioned this before, I think our economy is good, as Ms. Bates mentioned last time, but our political environment is not. I just think it's a bridge too far at this time. So I'm much more supportive of the other two, and I don't think we should have to live five-year to five-year, even though we have a five-year forecast that we're bound to. But I think the 10-year, after you've had the people endorse this three times already, is a way to do it, at least from my way of thinking.
Mr. Messer?
Yeah, I think I concur, that I think, you know, some change is good, a whole lot of change may not be so good, given the dynamics of what we don't know about this first-of-its-kind election in our district this fall. And so I think the inclusion of an extension to 10 years, and that we can say the things like, "It's not going to raise your taxes," et cetera, et cetera, I think is a very important part when we have a question mark, to be able to say that. But I also believe beyond that, then the idea of the continuous is definitely worth our consideration, as I think, especially during a presidential year and other high turnout years in what has turned out to be a very different city in 2019 than we were 10 years ago or more. So I would say that my leaning would be towards expanding it to the 10 years, but leaving it at that for this time.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Ms. Bates.
I know that this is all really confusing to the voters. I mean, if our board president's confused, just imagine what is going to be out there. And I agree with the treasurer that the continuing levy is very attractive, but it's not apparent in the language that it's a renewal, and that's a real concern. And in May, one of our local districts had a substitute levy, one of the Southwest Ohio districts, and it went down. So I forget which one it was, it wasn't Loveland, maybe it was Loveland, anyway, it was one of the...
Madeira?
Madeira.
Wow.
So I'm now more inclined to go with the 10-year levy, because the voters have proven that three times over, that this is a levy that is in their favor. And to at least extend that levy for some additional years, I think would be very helpful to the district, so we're not always in a levy mode, although it's going to be that way for the next few years, anyway.
And I think that I'm leaning toward that as well, except I think we really have a task in informing the public even how the 10-year levy renewal works. Because we have one next year, and one probably right after that? Am I correct? Treasurer Wagner?
So we're not informing it in 2019.
Right. So if we, you know, with the 10-year one, I think it's going to be very, very important for us to inform the public what that means in the long term. So that was my only concern about that one. Yes, Ms. Bolton?
Could I ask a question, Treasurer, for public's benefit? We have the one in 19, which is the one we're talking about, and then the 20 and the 22. Which one is the one that we share with the Preschool Promise Initiative?
That's the next one, November of '20, it's a $48 million one, where we have $15 million set aside for preschool expansion.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments before we move on with the resolutions? Okay, so there are four resolutions. Thank you, Mr. Hoynes. There are four resolutions. Yes.
I'm sorry, ma'am. Could we ask procedurally, are we bound, because these have been introduced in the first reading, to vote on all three, or can we just move to vote on one? Or I don't know...
That's where I was going. I wasn't going to ask the question, but...
I don't know.
But as I was understanding it, the reason we included all of them is so we could take action, either yea or nay, on each one. I agree with Ms. Bolton, if we legally only have to do one, based on our consensus about it.
So there has to be a motion to take a vote on it. So if there's no motion to take a vote on the other two, there's no reason for you to vote on them.
Okay.
So you need a motion and a second to move one to be voted on.
Okay. Yes.
Well, can I, on behalf of the Board of Education, withdraw three of them?
A motion to withdraw...
Two of them?
Two.
Yeah.
From the agenda, sure.
Right. And that way, they're gone.
There you go.
Yes, let's do that. Thank you.
So I move that Resolution Option 1, five-year renewal, and Resolution Option 3, substitute levy, those resolutions be withdrawn from the agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second? Ms. Bowers, second. Any discussion or comments? Okay, Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
President Jones?
Aye. Thank you, motion carries. So the resolution that we're presenting today is Resolution Number 2, Option 2, 10-year renewal, and I'm going to ask our Finance Chair to introduce that.
Thank you, Madam President. On behalf of the Finance Committee, I introduce the Resolution declaring it necessary to levy a tax in excess of the 10 mil limitation. And with the, it is not revised since our packet, but it is revised since our previous discussion, and it is the resolution that asks for a renewal levy for the duration of 10 years. I submit and hope for passage.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion, comments? Big change for us. Okay. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Excuse me, Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky? I'm sorry, Mr. Messer?
Ms. Messer?
I started to say Mr. Morosky, I meant Mr. Messer, I was going too fast.
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. So the next resolution, Ms. Bolton, would you present the next resolution?
Yes. I got so happy about the other one that I... All right. And we're certainly going to have the treasurer explain this rather than me, although there are other board members that can probably explain it as well. I would like to introduce, again, on behalf of the Finance Committee, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission, and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the County Auditor. I submit as written and hope for approval.
Yes. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. In discussion, Treasurer Wagner, could you briefly kind of go over this, so for the sake of all board members and our public, we kind of have a better understanding of this?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So this is a resolution where the Board of Education is accepting the calculation of the tax rates from the Hamilton County Auditor. This is an annual event, and they collect all, they recalculate the values of all of the properties that we have property taxes on, and they recalculate the millage rate, and then they state the revenue on a tax year versus a fiscal year, which we operated on. And so it's just an annual event. They're a little bit behind schedule this year, and it's due to the Hamilton County Auditor by May 20th.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you so much. We, I just want to thank the board and congratulate the board for a really healthy and robust discussion about these tax levy options. I think we not only made a critical decision for our district, but I think the process that we used to inform the public was good, and I think we're in a good place now with that. Thank you. Okay. Superintendent Mitchell, do you have a report?
I do. I have a very short report with some pictures of our students, but before I begin that portion of my report, it would be remiss of me not to mention that the connection to the Cincinnati Art Academy came through Vice President, Board Member Messer. He actually made the connection, and so really appreciative that Board Member Messer has been instrumental in bringing partners to the table who actually provide some of the needs we have for our kids. I just wanted to make sure I mentioned that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very exciting to know that High Park School, we have some students who are advancing to an international competition, and I think the picture is coming up in just a moment. A group of High Park students, they earned first place in the Ohio History Day competition. And just to kind of give you a preview of some of the topics that they talked about, one of their topics that they talked about was called "Beyond the Borders of Nationality." And so very robust presentation that our students were able to make, and are going to a national history competition, so it's very exciting. Nearly 3,000 students will compete in the National History Day at the University of Maryland in June, so good luck to those young people. In addition, Aiken sophomore chosen for an international summit. Keishon Townsend is a 10th grader at Aiken High School. He is one of 150 young people who will be participating in a worldwide annual international Congress of Youth Voices Summit. It's going to be a five-day conference, and we're on the next slide, please, this August in Puerto Rico. Yes, that's very exciting. All right, on to our next slide. Thank you. Cincinnati Links Project. So these are some students from different schools who participate in the Links Project. So there are two presentations. One is for the high school, which is offered at the GE Aviation Learning Center, and then the second location is for our elementary students, our intermediate grades, and that was hosted at Aiken. And so there were some very, very interesting projects, the kids did a phenomenal job. And then just a last thing on our teacher recruitment. Human Resources has been leading the way in innovative ways of recruiting teachers and bringing them to CPS. We've been doing a lot of different ways to engage young people. Channel 5 recently highlighted our day in the life, and this is where teachers have the opportunity to see what a day in the life in Cincinnati Publics is really all about. It looks like we have a brief video clip.
For these Aiken High School seniors, today marks the end of Cincinnati Publics' year. Parents and parents of our incoming teachers recruit, visit the study session, work your career.
CPS gave me a really great education, and so I'm here to put that back into the community and give back to those kids. I love teaching.
In the midst of a booming economy, CPS is aggressively competing for teachers. Showcase days offer a peek inside of the classrooms and the early communities these new teachers may call home.
We are doing whatever we can to make sure that people are making good decisions about where they want to come, teach, and we want to showcase all the successes of Cincinnati Publics.
Ingress teacher Trent White was on the other side of the recruiting table last year. I was somebody I love teaching, I'm excited about teaching, and I've become so much better to become a teacher, being you're actually doing it, trying out things, staying up with it. Trent says that he's blown a lot, as the act of Ohio Aces become fiscal white.
Everything is a great song, aesthetic song, north purple song, listening to that in the altar, all the things that they play there, and we're actually making a certain difference to hear our teachers play today.
That's a lesson these new teachers might not learn from a textbook or off the whiteboard, the ones that are approved, hoping for the CPS.
We're looking for people whose heart is in their profession and who are doing what they love.
Well, with some quickly starting for these students, new school year just right around the corner, you can't bring any more force to this district. In college, children should try, go to a local community.
So Juliette Indalatio is doing a phenomenal job working with our incoming teachers, and so we just really wanted to highlight the fact that the news picked up this story, so thanks to HR and Paul McDonald.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the revised recommendations of the superintendent?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? I did see my neighbor in that Links presentation, she's on the video, so I'll have to tell her. Okay, Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Aye.
President Jones?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the revised report of the treasurer?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Sorry. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
President Jones?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Anybody have any inquiries or updates? I have one, very short one. You guys are probably tired of hearing me talk about trying to get this collaborative meeting together, but we ran into another snag. But this is our final date, and if we don't choose this date, it will be at least the end of July or August. So June 12th. Now that's a date when, I believe, five of us, five board members are available, but at 5:00. So that's the date we're trying to finalize, 5 to 7 on that date. Now, yes.
You made a meeting at 4:00, is that right?
It, that's very, is there not? I don't know.
There is a Business Advisory Council.
The last meeting is scheduled for May.
Okay. That's the date. I'm sorry. We got to get it on the books.
I'm not here, so it's cool.
Okay.
What's the, June?
June, June 12. And I offered for us to host that here, so we're talking about, of course, but we're talking about potentially 22 people, so we're going to need a way to accommodate that group, that number. And as well, we had an internal discussion about an idea to maybe have the meeting facilitated by an outside facilitator, as opposed to try to combine two formal meetings together. We still, because each of us are bringing our boards, we still have to do the standard procedure, roll call and all of that, but maybe to have someone facilitate the conversation. So that's where we are now. You will get in your packets for next week and a more specific agenda, as requested by the board a few weeks ago, and certainly your feedback is welcome on that. Any questions about that, Ms. Bolton?
So will that agenda and the issues listed, or however that it's going to be, you want our feedback, so there still would be an opportunity to add or change, or...
There will be an opportunity to add or change, but we're also, I'm also working with Father Graham...
Right.
From there, yes, absolutely.
And then the other piece, I don't know if I saw this somewhere, but some, I saw it, and I don't know if it was about this. I see this as a joint board meetings of the two boards, and I saw somewhere, maybe it was in the Google Calendar, a reference about that it's a task force.
That didn't come from us. I don't know, I haven't seen that, so I don't know where that's...
I think I saw it with the Google Calendar when perhaps the other folks sent out, and maybe it was wrong. Am I talking about something different?
Are you talking about the Doodle Poll, not Google Calendar, the Doodle Poll?
Well, I tell you, it was, I saw the doodle poll, and I was very confused by that, because I've been in constant communication with Father Graham and had no knowledge that that was even put out there. So I think that brought a lot of confusion, but I'm going to be talking to him today, just to finalize his date, which I talked to him yesterday. So we're really, as far as I know, I wouldn't, I'm disregarding that doodle, because I don't think, I don't think it was intended, I don't know what happened, that it even got out there. Ms. Bolton?
I would just make a suggestion that I don't have any interest in it being called a task force.
Right.
I have much more interest in, it's a joint board meeting.
It's a joint board meeting. It always has been.
And that, I think our engagement and public relations and information folks probably need to meet with their folks as well, so that we have the, some sort of unified message going out about that meeting.
And, and I will communicate that as well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So that's all I have with that. Any other inquiries and updates? Okay, assignments? Uh-oh.
Oh, my God.
Oh, my goodness. Hearing none. Let me move past that real quick.
It's May.
Okay. I, I, I need a motion to recess into executive session to consider pending or imminent court action and conference with board legal counsel.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, is that a roll call? Treasurer, roll call. Ms. Wagner?
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Aye. We'll take a brief break, and then we'll meet in the board conference. Thank you.
I want to just follow up.